Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the March 19th meeting of the Common Council to order. I will ask the clerk to call a roll.
Alderman Weigel.
Here.
Marzak.
Here.
Shapleski.
Here.
Boyt-Nyer.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
May.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
And Vitale.
Here.
That's ten present.
We have a quorum. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Weigel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening we have four items before us for public hearing. I will ask our clerk to read Public Hearing Number One.
Resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvement of South Eightieth Street from West Grant Street to West Lincoln Avenue and South Eighty-seventh Street from West Harrison Avenue to Dead End by concrete reconstruction, new concrete sidewalk, new driveway approaches, storm sewer relay, sanitary sewer relay, water main relay, building services, and utility adjustments.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor Devine. Okay, this is the public hearing for Eightieth and Eighty-seventh Streets. Whoops, I lost my pictures. Hope that doesn't continue. Here's the procedures for tonight. I'm going to discuss the project's scope and cost. I'm going to go through assessment rates and methods of payment. Then we're going to have a time of comments and questions from the Common Council and citizens affected. Then we're going to have a time where the public hearing is closed and the projects referred to the Public Works Committee tonight for a discussion and a possible vote. And then it would come back here to the full council later tonight. Okay, this is the limits of Eightieth Street. We're just going from Grant Street to Lincoln. And then Eighty-seventh Street, we're just doing the cul-de-sac to the Dead End. Okay, I do have my pictures, that's good. This is an old photo from 1949. It shows the pavement that's still out there on Eightieth Street. This pavement was put in in 1929, and it's really just a seal coat road. There's no concrete there, except for the curb. It's just an old-fashioned gravel road that's covered with tar, and it's now 90 years old. So when this was built in 1929, only about 22 percent of people actually even had a car. But here's some pictures of the pavement, and this is actually how it was built. They just spread some stones down, and then they put some tar over it. But at this point, it's badly deteriorated. We call this alligator cracking, where it looks like the back of an alligator, it's broken into chunks. Here's some more pictures. Potholes are getting bigger. There's really nothing under there. Like I said, it's just gravel with some tar on it. So it's amazing that it has lasted 90 years like this. And then the other street is Eighty-seventh Street, which is actually very different. That was actually a concrete road in 1965. So that's now 54 years old. We typically expect a road, a concrete road, to last about 50 years, and this one has. But at this point, you know, I thought about patching this, but the whole road would need to be patched. So we need to take it out and start over with a new concrete road. This is beyond any type of repair that we could do. And not just the roads, but under the roads, we're also going to have to do some work, specifically on Eightieth Street. The water main on Eightieth Street's from 1924, so it's 95 years old. We're going to put in a new water main, and then there'll be new copper water pipes that'll go up to about the sidewalk. That's the public portion. We'll talk a little bit later about the private portion. We can replace that, too, on a voluntary basis. Then we're going to put in new storm sewer. Actually, there is no storm sewer on Eightieth Street right now, or Eighty-seventh Street. So we'll be putting in new storm sewer with laterals to each house, in case anyone does want a sump pump now or in the future. The sanitary sewer on Eightieth Street also is from 1924, so that's 95 years old. We are not replacing the streetlights, because both, in both cases, well, at least on Eightieth Street, the lights were replaced in 2013 with LED lights. So we're not actually going to be doing that at this time. Everybody should have gotten these handouts in the mail. This is the private property work that we're offering. It's all voluntary. Basically, the city's offering $13,000 in home improvements for about $2,200. So you just, we just need you to fill this out if you're interested, and check the boxes of what you would like. I'm going to explain a little bit more about each of these things. So the homes on Eightieth Street do have lead water pipes going into the basement. Now, Eighty-seventh Street was built later, so they do not have that. So this doesn't apply to Eighty-seventh Street. But the water in West Alice does come from Lake Michigan via the Milwaukee Water Works. The water is tested. The water meets all federal guidelines for safety, so the water is safe. In fact, the water, the Milwaukee Water Works does add phosphate to the water, which creates a protective coating on the inside of your pipes. So the water actually isn't even touching the lead pipe at this point. But, that being said, there are still ways that lead could leach into the water. If you let the water sit for a long time, like if you're on a vacation or something, it is good to come run the water when you come back from vacation, because sometimes the lead can leach through. And then when there's any construction in the area, that's another time when some of that phosphate could be shaken loose. It could get some lead into the water, which is why the city will be offering free water filters to all residents on this project that you can keep. If you don't have one already, we'll give you one for free, and you can keep it forever. And that should protect you during construction from any of the lead that I'm talking about there. But we do ask the $1,600 co-pay. This is being paid for by a grant from the USCPA and DNR. But it is a voluntary program, so the property owners would pay $1,600. And then this grant that we got from the government would pay $3,400. The $1,600 cost, $1,600 cost would be treated as a special assessment. So you could put it on a 10-year payment plan at 4 percent interest. If you don't think that you can afford the $1,600, we do have a housing rehabilitation grant program that may pay 100 percent of the cost if you are qualified. There's also a housing rehabilitation loan program that would qualify you for 2.5 percent interest instead of the 4 percent that we're offering. This would be put in using trenchless technology, so we wouldn't be digging a trench through the middle of your front yard. They would kind of bore or tunnel under your yard and into your basement. But if you are interested, we do need to hear back from you, because there is an agreement that we need you to sign agreeing to all this. The other project, or other offer that we have, is the sump pump, which MMSD is offering free of charge. The city would put this in for free if you agree to pay for the storm lateral, which is $662. We want someplace for the sump pumps to discharge, too. So we don't want to create new water problems by having you discharge your sump pump into your neighbor's basement. So we're asking that if you do choose the sump pump, that you also sign up for the storm lateral, so that the water can go into the sewer. This is all being paid for, like I said, by MMSD. They're trying to get the rainwater and the clear water out of the sewer system, so that they don't end up dumping sewage into the lake, as they have in the past. So this is all volunteer, though, if you don't want to participate, or you don't want someone in your basement, because they would have to come into your basement and put this in. Then the next program, which is also free, is the sanitary lateral rehabilitation. This is where they would literally line the inside of your old sanitary lateral. This is the pipe that drains your toilet and your showers and your sinks. This is the same premise as the last one. MMSD is trying to get this rainwater or clear water out of the sewer system, so that they don't end up dumping into the lake. So they're willing to pay for that. Like I said, removes all the rainwater that would be leaking in through the joints in your pipe underground. This also would be trenchless, where they wouldn't be digging a trench. They might have to dig a hole like this picture shows, but then they would pull the sleeve through the pipe, and then the pipe gets, the sleeve gets very hard and adds, you know, quite a bit of life to the pipe. So funding for this is from MMSD. It's valued at about $3,500, but we're offering it for free on a volunteer basis, purely because MMSD wants to get that rainwater out of the sewer. I did do a speed study on Eightieth Street. We did not do one on Eighty-seventh, because I hope we don't have a speeding problem on a dead-end street. But we found very little traffic on Eightieth Street, only 36 cars. That's like the lowest I've ever seen. The average speed was about 19 miles an hour, 85th percentile speed. That's the speed that 85 percent of the people are going at or below. That was 26. There was one guy going 35. But we do have a neighborhood traffic management program. Typically, this would be for an 85th percentile speed that's over 28. So, you know, we're not really seeing a speeding problem here. But if you beg to differ with me, we are open to doing some sort of traffic calming, like these bump outs. They're completely free. They don't, we don't charge anything for that. Here's some, well, the other part of this is that there is a lot of parking on your street. That's probably explaining why a lot of traffic is going slower, because parked cars like this do kind of slow people down. I just wanted to highlight that because of the trees, specifically on Eightieth Street, we are going to have to bring the road in about six inches to get around the trees, because the equipment won't fit past the trees that are so close to the curb. The curb machine can't get past a tree like that. So we're just bringing it in that much on each side. Narrower streets, like I said, do slow people down. There wouldn't be any parking lost by doing six inches narrower. I just wanted to advise you of that. Here's some other things that we could do. Traffic circle does slow people down. Bump outs, pinch points do slow people down. But as I said, we're not really seeing a major problem on Eightieth, and certainly not on Eighty-seventh. There will be several sustained sustainability benefits to the project. All the gravel used will be 100 percent recycled crushed concrete from old pavements. Recycled fly ash from coal electric plants is used in the concrete to reduce mining for new cement. The new asphalt would be made from recycled asphalt as well. So we are recycling things. This is what the new pavement would look like, a new concrete street. First time that Eightieth Street's ever had a concrete street, and the second time that Eighty-seventh Street would have had one. Here's the project, the cost of both projects together. The pavement's $254,000, sanitary sewer $110,000, storm sewer $72,000, water main $76,000. So all told, it'll be half a million dollars, $500,000 project for both, for both together. Here's where the funding is coming from. The sanitary sewer is paid for out of the sanitary sewer fund, which is the citywide fee that everyone pays on their water bill. Likewise, the storm water, the storm sewer would come from the storm water fund. That's also on your water bill as a separate line that everybody pays in the city. The water utility comes from the same water bill, which everybody pays. That's 15 percent. The general taxes that everybody pays, that's going to pay for 33 percent. So the residents are paying about 16 percent with the special assessment. So it's a smaller portion of the total cost. So here's a sample special assessment. If you have a 45-foot lot, some are bigger, some are smaller. But just a 45-foot lot, assessment rate's $59.25. So that comes to $2,600. If you have a driveway, and I think most of the people on Eighty-seventh do, then we add in the driveway costs. It's $7.40 per square foot for the driveway, so that gets added to that. The bills for this would not be mailed out until March of 2020, so you've got a year to prepare for this. You would get the bill next March. At that point, you could pay in a lump sum. You could pay in a five-year installment or a 10-year installment. If you chose the 10-year period with 4 percent interest, your first year, the payment for the whole year would be $373. And then the payment in your last year, the year 2029, would be $277. So why do we special assess? Well, for over 110 years, city residents have historically paid the full cost of the new street in front of their property, because they were the ones alone that were enjoying this unique benefit of having this new street in front of their house. So it improved the value of their house, improved the curb appeal. So in the old days, they did, they paid the whole cost. Like I said, on this project, you're only paying about 16 percent of the cost. The assessment rate is $59.25 for all residential properties anywhere in the city. Doesn't matter how wide the street is, or how high the traffic volumes are, or how high the actual bid prices are. Doesn't matter if you live on Lincoln, or if you live on a cul-de-sac like Eighty-seventh, everybody pays the same. So everyone is treated equally at the same rate. For over 100 years, Wisconsin law has allowed for special assessments, and there have been over 100 court cases in Wisconsin that have upheld this law as a fair and reasonable method to recoup the costs for this project. So this has certainly stood the test of time. Here's some more reasons why we special assess. Special assessments are the only way to ensure that tax-exempt schools, churches, hospitals, county parks, utilities, railroads pay their fair share, too. No one is exempt from special assessments, even though there are 430 properties in the city that do not pay any property taxes. And many of these tax-exempt schools, churches, hospitals, and county parks are very large pieces of property that actually encompass about 28 percent of the total city land area, and they only contribute to the city's costs through these special assessments. Likewise, businesses, corporations, and manufacturers pay a higher assessment rate to ensure that they contribute their fair share. So their rate is $74 to $88 per foot. So here's a map that kind of highlights what I was just saying. The shaded areas, the different colors, are the tax-exempt properties in the city. The 28 percent of the city is shaded there, and these are all the properties that don't pay any property taxes, but they do pay our special assessments. So they're all paying their fair share, for the road, at least. And this map shows everybody, at least on the east end of West Alice, that has actually paid a special assessment in the last 10 years. So the different colors here are different years. The blue is one year, the red's another year. But these are all the properties, and you can see it's almost everybody, has paid a special assessment at least once. A lot of these people on the east end have paid for their alley and their street. So most have already paid for their street. And of course, if you go back 50 years, everybody has paid. And if you go back 100 years, everybody's probably paid twice. So everybody is paying their fair share. Everybody eventually will pay for their street. Why do we charge the 4 percent interest? Well, the city borrows the funds for this project. The city is paying interest to these municipal bondholders over the next 10 years. So the city is merely passing along these interest charges to the residents that choose the five- or 10-year payment plan. The city is not making profit off these, the interest that we're charging. You will probably have to park out of your driveway, or, of course, the people on Eightieth Street can probably, will always be able to get into their alley. But there will be times where they're paving, where you'll probably have to park on neighboring streets. You do not have to get a permit for that. The police will keep an eye on your car, keep an eye on the neighborhood. If you are disabled, we can set up a special disabled parking spot if you have one of the plates or the, these permits here. So let us know, and we can give you a closer spot to park. Here's a little bit of the schedule. Starting May 1st, we hope to advertise for bids. The bid opening would then be on May 15th. We do not get to pick who the contractor is, because state law says we have to take the low bidder. Then on May 21st, the council would award the contract, and we'd hope to get going about June 17th. Each of the two streets would have a separate deadline. So we would expect both streets to be done by September 27th. But I'm not saying that each street would be that long. Each street would have a shorter deadline. The contractor would be required to post a performance bond to guarantee their work, and they would be assessed a penalty of $2,000 a day if they went past the deadline. And then, anyone who chooses for the private property work, like the lead service replacement or the sump pump, that would be a separate contract that would start in October. The reason being that this is more of a plumbing contract, and most of the contractors building our streets do not have plumbers on their staff. So this would be a separate contract that would start after this one is done, and it would include plumbers that would have to come into your house and do some of this work in the house. So with that, I will open it up to any questions or concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels, do we have any comments or questions from the members of the Common Council? Seeing none, do we have any comments or questions on this item from the members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close Public Hearing Number One, and I will ask the clerk to read Public Hearing Number Two.
Ordinance to amend Section 12.16, paragraph 14 of the Revised Municipal Code relative to setting a consistent timeframe for appeals of special use decisions by the Common Council.
Thank you. Mr. Steeble, when you're ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this particular ordinance amendment, and the purpose of the public hearing, is that some attorneys have suggested that after a special use is awarded, it could potentially be appealed for up to six months. And that has had certainly a negative impact on some of the prospective developers that want to develop in West Alice. And we are allowed by state law to adopt a local ordinance that says everybody that wants to appeal a special use could do so within 30 days. And that's the ordinance that the Park Commission has recommended, and is the subject of the public hearing today. So that's the purpose of the hearing, and that's what we're recommending. If you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there comments, questions from the Common Council on Public Hearing Number Two? Mayor Devine? Alderman Weigel.
John, I just have a question. So the council grants someone a special use for their, to open a new business, and they don't like the restrictions that we might put on them? And then they have that period of time to appeal it? Is that what it is?
If I could refer to our able city attorney.
Alderman, the concept is if someone is the actual subject of the special use permit, then they have their own appeal rights under state law for 30 days. The issue more would be if a neighboring property owner sees that a special use permit is granted and thought something was done inappropriately, they would have a six-month window. So this just makes sure that everyone plays in the same field, and everyone has 30 days, as opposed to one particular person having six months.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the council on Public Hearing Number Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the members of the audience on Public Hearing Number Two? Okay, seeing none, we will close our second public hearing, and I will ask our clerk to read our third.
Ordinance to amend...
Mr. Clerk, can you read them both together?
The...
Three and four?
Yes.
So, Mayor, is that all right?
That's fine.
All right. Number three is ordinance to amend the future land use map within the city's comprehensive plan, Chapter 10 Land Use, from public and semi-public to commercial. Land use classification for property located at 1,000 South 72nd Street. And item four is an ordinance to, excuse me, ordinance to amend the official West Alice zoning map by rezoning the property located at the 800 South block of 72nd Street and 1,000 block of South 72nd Street from P1 Park District to C3 Community Commercial District.
Thank you. Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On these two public hearings, one is to amend the comprehensive plan, and the other one is to amend the actual zoning. Last summer, July, at some point in time, we rezoned basically this entire area of McKinley Park. If you may recall, the northern part of McKinley Park, which is one of the ball fields and the parking lot, was the form, home of the former Pillar industrial site. We acquired the site because the school district suggested they want to have more ball fields in this area. So we acquired that property. We relocated the road that went through there, and then added this part to the, to the, to the park. And then, at the time, we rezoned this to park, so that we could make sure, as we were going through the development process, I'm going to talk about in a minute, that we, to ensure that we had a neighborhood park in that area. And essentially, we did the same thing with, with the actual zoning part. So we're going to be amending the land use plan and the zoning to make them commercial, so that they'd potentially be used for collateral for development. But we're still going to be able to maintain a neighborhood park, and I'm going to talk to you about how we're going to do that. In this area here, we've got McKinley Park, composed of what I talked about before, was the old Pillar site, and then the old remnants of the old McKinley School that was torn down many years ago. As I mentioned, on July 17th, we did the rezoning, and the purpose of that was to consolidate the land masses, so that we could work with the developer to get a bigger vision, but yet still maintain a neighborhood, a park amenity. And that's why we rezoned that from M1 to Park. And these areas here, from RB2 to C3 Commercial, and this was zoned to Park as well. The purpose of that was to take a bigger vision of how we could revitalize this neighborhood and other neighborhoods, and the image of the city itself. We have the potential to get an $81 million development, and that would generate about $3.2 million in additional property tax relief, and create well over 1,000 jobs. McKinley Park is something that we need to be able to maintain, or need to maintain a park element somewhere in that neighborhood. And as I get to this further, we're going to talk about how we could hopefully maintain it right on McKinley Park itself. But the developer that we're talking about has acquired the property from the school district, and has agreed to contribute $400,000 for acquisition of land, if we need to acquire land. And the school district has donated $100,000, and the city may put in up to half a billion dollars. So $1 million to be able to replicate the park either in its current location or another location within the neighborhood, so you don't have to cross a major arterial street. What our goal is, is to probably keep this area here as the park here, as the fieldhouse, if you can tell in the middle here. And I think these, these tennis courts are used primarily for that basketball-type, not basketball, but that recreational environment there. And this green space, and what would be developed would be the old McKinley industrial area, and then part of the soft, of the baseball field, shotlot field, and some of the, some of the remaining tennis court. That's kind of our goal, is how we'd like to do this. But look, since we're looking at the whole neighborhood and looking at park amenities, what can we do to enhance that, and what can we do to make sure that we keep a park neighborhood amenity in the neighborhood? And so we looked at some other areas. For example, we did this very similar to Roosevelt School. When the school sold that off for that medical clinic, they had this remnant parcel of acres of the city bought from the school for a dollar, and then we put in about a half a billion dollars to, for that area, for about, that's about an acre as a point of reference. And we want to be able to keep at least an acre, I think our, we're discussing 1.5 acres, 1.4 acres somewhere in there, that we'd like to keep in this part of the McKinley Park area. We've done a lot of parks recently. The city spent over $2 million just on parks in our neighborhoods. We want to keep that momentum going. I think parks make neighborhoods, neighborhoods make cities, make great places to live and work, and that's what we're trying to make sure that we, we achieve. We're also, as we've done in other neighborhoods, work with the Fairview Neighborhood to take a look at whatever we do do, how is the best that we could do to accomplish that? So we'll have, we will be retaining a consultant to meet with the neighborhood residents and talk about what they want to see, and what they want to have in the neighborhood, and what do they think is really important, so that whatever we end up with is something that the neighborhood can appreciate and want and desire. Just very preliminarily, we took a quick park study, so speak of the McKinley Park neighborhood, and looked at the other park amenities around there, and those will be part of the discussion. I think we've got Copperwood East and West over here, and Veterans Park are theoretically in the area, but this is the McKinley Park area. And we'll talk more about that. But this, as I mentioned earlier, this is the kind of area that we'd like to be able to see and to maintain as a neighborhood park, and, if at all possible, but yet still be able to accommodate a much larger development, and we'll still be talking about what that's going to be. All neighborhoods are in transition. Alice Chalmers is no longer here. They were a great corporation when they were here. One of the problems of being a, being a single company town is that when company goes, so does the town. And in this landmass area, we're able to recreate a lot of industrial, or industrial spaces and office spaces. And we have about the fifth largest office building in the Milwaukee metro area on the old Alice Chalmers grounds, and five-foot... old Alice Chalmers grounds, in five-foot stories, it's 650,000 square feet of office, about 2,500 jobs, and it generates well over $2 million a year in property taxes. And it's what used to be dead pigeons laying on the floor is now our single largest taxpayer in the city. In fact, in the redevelopment sphere, out of the top 11 taxpayers in the city, six of them were created through redevelopment. The someplace, as I mentioned, is 98% occupied. They put insert floors in here, five floors, so that we get more office space in there. We got Toshiba in the, in the back and now Blast Cleaning Technologies as well. The east office building, their 1126 building, a grand old building from the Alice Chalmers era, has seen its, it's, it has seen its better days. Unfortunately, nine years ago, when the building was assessed at over $12 million, today it's about $3 million. And so it's declining rapidly, and there's about 5%, 6% actually occupied. They moved them all to the north end, because that's the only end that can accommodate them. But the key issue here is that building could be, could be generating 270, a quarter million dollars more a year in property taxes. So we call that an opportunity cost. Whenever you don't do something, you pay a cost for it. Whether you do something or you don't, don't do something, you still pay a cost, and we call that an opportunity cost. So we're wasting a lot of money. We're, we're having some unrealized opportunities, and we're trying to hopefully keep our property tax burden as low as we can, and so we have to move some things around to try to make the city a better place to live, a better image. And unfortunately, I'm certainly saying that nobody likes to lose any amenity that they have. We're going to try and keep the pain to as a minimum as, if we possibly can, but that's our primary goal. But in that particular building, it's, I'm not sure how they end up building it, but all the four plates are different, and it's not very well organized, and now it's falling apart, and unfortunately, it needs to be cleared. And we also need to figure out how to finance that kind of a demolition project and a revitalization project. And the school board started off wanting to sell their, their building, and that was a great idea. They had it on the market for a long time for, for rental and then for sale, and then cobalt. Partners came and looked at that property and said they wanted to buy the property, and I think everybody was delighted that we would get private business back in here. And then we'd be putting it back onto the tax rolls, so that would start making, paying property taxes right away. The developer then came back and said, "We'd like to buy McKinley Park." And they also said they want to buy some single-family homes in some other areas, and we said, "You know, let's take a, let's step back and take a look at this whole area. We don't need to buy single-family homes." And they were going to do a multi-family building here, and they go, "That's not quite the right transition into a single-family residential neighborhood. We can do better than that. A commercial building wouldn't be so bad." And then, I'm not sure why they put a soccer field in there, but I think it's just a, a green space is what they were looking for, for the multi-family and for the neighborhood. But we said, "Let's step back and take a bigger look and a longer vision as to how we could revitalize our community and also in this particular neighborhood as well so that we can realize the advantages of redevelopment." In this particular area, there's a lot of asphalt, a lot of educational facilities. There's some good room for doing some newer, better things in the, in the educational environment. And our priorities are to attract the right mix of office density. We didn't really want to have multi-family. We've got lots of multi-family going up. This is more of an office corridor. We think we could get, we could create more jobs. If we could create at least 1,000 more jobs in this particular development, and they'll bring in their, the need for housing and, and more retail. So we, so office development drives a lot of redevelopment in the city. And this was their initial plan of, apparently they were going to acquire MATC's Child Care Center, but we'll see about that. They were going to put duplexes in there, and we go, "I don't think we need more duplexes. Maybe townhomes would be, would be okay," or some other commercial development. They wanted to put a parking structure over here, and, and then 300,000 square feet of office, which, with, with, with parking underneath, which is kind of our shtick, we're trying to get, is that from the western suburbs, they have free parking, from the downtown, they have very expensive parking. We need to be like Ginger Rogers with Fred Astaire. She did everything, Fred Astaire did only high heels and backwards, and we have to kind of do that same kind of juggle act to make West Alice a viable entity in the Milwaukee Market area. And that's why we need to provide housing, provide parking so that we can attract the high-quality development that we want to get and the high-quality office facilities that we, we hope to achieve. Once we, once this project gets done, hopefully the office building, the school administration building will be acquired and be put back on the tax roll, valued somewhere around $10, $11 million. Put a facelift on the building, kind of create a whole new image for the South 70th Street corridor so that we get a revitalized and refreshed image to the city. They'll be bringing over about 30,000 square, square feet of tenants that are currently in the east office building, bring those over to the school building, and be able to attract a lot more jobs and a lot more development. Our goal was to get a broader vision for this neighborhood, as you can see a lot of asphalt in there, also McKinley Park. We need to keep the park amenities. We also need to get to maximize development, and that was the purpose of this size here. So we get the acquisition, demolition of the east side and the west side, we can start making some major inroads into providing property tax relief. If things go according to schedule, they'll take the office, the east side office building down this summer, about six months from now. They'll, they'll have to renovate the school board building to move the tenants over. Once the north side is demolished, they'll put up this extended stay motel, and then start with the office development in the area. And that new office development there would generate about another $2, $2.5 million in property tax relief. So that was kind of the purpose of why we're looking at this neighborhood, why it is part of the overall process, and that's what we're trying to accomplish. If you have additional questions, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Excuse me, are there any questions or comments from the members of the common council on public height, public hearing items three and four?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigle.
John, could you go back to the slide 20 ago, 30 ago, that shows kind of like the bird's eye view of the property with the rezoning? And I guess while you're doing that, I'm just going to say, that's a good one there, I guess.
Are these what you were looking for?
Yeah, I think, I think we'll, we'll get the idea there. I just want to say that this rezoning request, I think, first hit the plan commission agenda 20 days ago, 2-0 days ago, and was approved by the plan commission. Does that sound right? I, I looked on the LIC, and it looks like, that's where it came from. And...
First part of the year.
Yeah, and it, it just, and I know this negotiation has been going on for a year, and it's been a long, and, as you say, fluid negotiation with the developer. I'm just disappointed that this, taking what looks to me like being able to disappear the rest of this park is a decision that we have to, 20 days to think about. One of the other aldermen said, "Well, we should have had a neighborhood meeting on it." Yeah, we should have had a neighborhood meeting on this. I also understand the developer wants to close this deal this week. Is that, is that correct?
I wouldn't say this week.
Well, I've been, I, what I've, what I've been told by you and your staff was the deal had to close this Thursday.
As, it's probably not going to close until sometime in April, is my guess. We'd like to close by the end of the month. I think we're looking back March 28th, 29th.
We don't, because that's news to me.
It is news to you and...
Yes, I believe it's news to probably most people on the council.
Yes.
Okay. Also news to me, I think you handed this email to everybody here tonight, was the new negotiation points. This was an email from the developer, and it's timestamped 6:34 PM tonight. Okay? I understand that you're trying to get a deal done here, but it feels like a train that we're on, and there's nobody at the switch. It's just, it's just running. If we go back to the rezon, so, so what you're saying now is that the north part of the park would go to the developer, zone C3, and then that, that middle third would go to the developer, zone as C3, essentially like where the two ball fields are? But the tennis court would stay or not? Well, I, I guess I'd like to see, I'd like to, I'd like to have a lot more detail there.
Yeah, we will. The northern, I think there's two tenant, there were two tennis courts there.
Yes.
The northern one is a tennis court, the southern one, I think now is a...
Was a full-court basketball, but now it's more of a rec basketball thing.
Yeah, something like that, yeah. That would, at this point, that would stay, the, the north part would be redeveloped.
Okay. So the north, the north part would be redeveloped and zoned as C3?
Yes, it would all be rezoned C3.
It would all be zoned C3, but we would retain ownership of the, the middle, the southern half of McKinley?
No, we would, the developer needs to acquire the property for collateral purposes, and then they would lease back the property to the city for a dollar. And then they couldn't start developing anything until we had this thing figured out about what the park is going to be and how it's going to be configured and all that. And that's what we're trying to get to right now.
And that's all going to be in writing? This is not a promise, a handshake?
That's why we're still...
That's why it's not going to close this Thursday.
That's why we're still negotiating. We're not going to do this until it's, until it's ripe. Until it's good, then we'll say we've got a reasonable, a good deal. Everything's going to be in writing.
Well, again, like I say, I was very nervous, and I assume other members of the council were very nervous, because up until just now, I was under the impression that this deal had to close this Thursday, because that's what, I haven't talked to the developer, I'm not on the negotiation team. This is what I've heard from staff. Okay? Now, if you're telling me that we still have time to make it right, you know, I'm a little more comfortable. I just want to go over the C3 permitted uses, okay? So in the C3, which would be like the northern half, the permitted uses, these would be businesses that they could put in there without a special hearing, right? I mean, it's, the land's going to belong to the developer, and he could put in a variety of businesses with no other input from the city or the neighborhood. And those businesses would be something like auto accessory store, department store, garden supply store, paint glass and wallpaper store, tobacco store, or toy stores. Those would be permitted uses that he, they could just put in there with no input from us. Now, the special uses, where there would be a public hearing, much like this special, this, this public hearing tonight, would include things like a food pantry, a hospital, a car wash, a hotel, a dry cleaner, or banquet facilities. Now, some of those are businesses we'd want, but maybe some of those are businesses that we wouldn't want, and we'd have the special use process to get a handle on that, right? That would be where we'd invite the neighbors back in. Is that correct?
That's true. A part thing to remember, though, like you could have an auto repair facility there. Well, this land is so valuable that you could put eight millions of dollars of development on it, you're not going to waste it by putting on a 20...
Well, and, and I think you, I think you just hit it right there. This land is very valuable to the neighbors as a park, okay? So when we're converting, it's currently five acres, okay? And if we're going to, we're going to sell, give away, pay somebody to take whatever half of it, are we gonna, are we gonna gain, gain another two and a half acres somewhere in the neighborhood? I, I don't see that happening, because we're not, you know, I'm, you know, I'm a park guy. You know, I, I think it's important to make the neighborhood safe and livable, for a neighborhood park where a mom can walk to the park and play in the swing in a big area and fly a kite and do the things that they can't do because they're in a duplex on a 40-foot lot. You know, that's what we need here, okay? And again, the way this thing has been so fluid, you know, like I said, we all got this email, read the date, it's today's date, and it says 6:34 PM, and this is what, this is, this came from the developer today, you know? I'm still very nervous about this. I feel better now that you're telling me that, you're telling me, and we, and you're telling everybody here, and we believe you, that the southern half of McKinley Park is essentially going to stay, plus get some improvements. Because right now, that southern third, that elevated green area, there's a cement pad and a couple lights on it, and, you know, I don't even know what goes, kids play hopscotch there, maybe, I don't know, but, you know, but I, I actually feel better, you know? It concerns me, the way this whole process happened. Like I said, this rezoning started 20 days ago. We have a comprehensive plan that we passed, I want to say in 2011, you know? And our comp plan talks about the value of parks, you know? So I think that's what I have to say on this subject for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigle. Are there any other comments or questions from the members of the common council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
We've got a couple of questions. The, the area to the south, you said, is not currently zoned, or is the proposed park area, that's that area just south of the orange rectangle up on the screen, is that correct?
That's currently zon, that was zoned last year to C3. And the north of that was zoned park, to make sure that we had a park somewhere in this area, just as a placeholder. And now this rezoning is going to rezon everything commercial, and then sell it to a developer, and then maintain part of that landmass for a park until or if we find some better place, that's what the neighborhoods are going to need to work with us to figure out what to do.
So it's not currently zoned P1?
That's right.
It's not currently zoned park?
The southern part is not zoned P1.
And who owns it?
Currently, the school district owns it.
The school district owns that piece. Is this one of those things where we can, we've got an agreement with them, we can get it back at our request?
Yes.
So we, we basically have the ability to take control of that land? All right, and you said there'd be about $1 million for new park in the future, put together with that deal?
That's our current plan.
Does that include purchasing buildings and, and the cost and the value of those buildings and then tearing them down to build the park?
It's, there's a half million dollars set aside right now for that, that's the target amount. Another half million for improvements.
And then I'm, you had mentioned that this is needed for collateral. It looks like the value of this, according to this email that Alderman Weigle references, is about $937,000. It's needed for collateral. Why don't, is there other collateral that we could help offer with than to lose this park? Has anything else been considered?
No other site has been offered, primarily because of the, they're going to be buying the park, the, the land from the school board, the parking lots. And then they're also, in the future, looking to structure some transaction with MATC, and so these parking lots might be in flux. And so there may need some parking that, needs to accommodate some different development. There may be a parking structure built to the south of the current school administration building. Those parts are still in, in flux.
My concern with this is that we're not going to have any P1 zoning left in the area. Essentially, on paper, through our zoning, we're not going to have a park in this area. And we won't have, we'll have some control over the land, but if he's not going to be developing it right away anyway, and if there's another way for us to put up some sort of collateral to help him, or put up some additional bonding or something to help him with his collateral, perhaps we can keep the zone the way it is, find alternative sites, and, and move this forward when we know that there's definitely a site for additional P1 in the neighborhood. So I, I know we'll discuss this more later in committee, but I, these are the concerns I have. I agree with Alderman Weigle, and I know Alderman Oetniers had similar concerns about keeping a park in the neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman May. Are there any other comments or questions on these two items from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Oetnier.
Hey, I just want to say, John, you know, I feel like since last common council meeting, a lot of this stuff has been kind of shoved down our throats, especially getting this email as well, too, just as we're sitting down. You know, I, and now that, you know, I echo Alderman Weigle's sentiments as well, you know, and I appreciate getting until April to think about this, but, you know, I've got a lot of citizens over here, a lot of them are my neighbors, and they want this park to stay. And since last week, I feel, or since the last common council meeting, I feel a lot of it's been shoved down our throats, even like my email in the last 24 hours. All these development pieces, changing, things highlighted, things circled, this has changed, and now we're doing it this way. It's, you can barely even apprehend it, there's so many changes. So again, I appreciate, you know, having until April, think about this and to make our decisions, but I just want you to know that that's, that's how I feel.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other comments or questions? Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the audience? If there are, we ask that you come up to the podium here and please give us your name and address for our record, and sign in either before or after your comments.
Okay. My name is David Clark. I live at 929 South 72nd Street. I'd like to comment about this proposed ordinance and rezoning. First, I'd like to present to the clerk, if I may, a petition that has been sent around the Fairview Park neighborhood.
Just leave it up there if you want, or you can, you can bring it up. That's all right. We know you.
First of all, I'd like to comment that the letter with the proposed ordinance maps are somewhat different than what this gentleman proposed and what I'm looking at right now. So the letter that was received by residents on South 72nd Street directly across from McKinley Park is different than what we saw today, okay? So that's a concern I have right there. If you're sending from the city, letters with a different map and an explanation of what you want to do with this rezoning, and now you're presenting something different, I see a little bit of a shuffle going on. In your 2030 comprehensive plan that you established on February 15th, 2011, by the common council, you say in your plan that you want to preserve park space, that you want to preserve the neighborhoods. You also make reference to business districts and commercial corridors. 70th Street is definitely a commercial corridor. I have no problem, and I don't think the neighbors have any problem with the development on 70th Street. But we don't understand why you need to branch out over to 72nd Street, which is a neighborhood. Once you start doing that, it's in danger of happening throughout the whole city. You can say it won't, but those of us that have been around long enough know it's a possibility. I have in front of me also the online report by Sean Ryan, a reporter for the Milwaukee Business Journal. It's dated April 11th, 2018. The last part of this article that I found, quote, "A final component of the project is 52 rowhouse-style housing units that would be built along 72nd Street, north of Washington Street." So if the proposal by Cobalt Partners LLC is 52 rowhouse housing units, which I know can change, why does it have to be rezoned commercially? It sounds to me like there's a little wiggle room going on here in regards to what might happen. And that concerns me. And when we went around with this petition around the neighborhood, 99.9% of the people in the Fairview neighborhood had deep concerns about this. And to be quite frank, these are registered voters. Now, sometimes people approve something because they believe that's what's expected. Or as Mr. Weigel said, that train has left the depot. Then there's deciding what is the right thing to do. What's the right thing to do for their children? So please do not approve these ordinances as we understand them right now, unless there's further explanation. And if you don't want to do it for the adults in this room, do it for the children, because they use that park all the time. I sit on my porch and I watch the children play. Last summer, there was softball tournaments. And just to see the look on the young girls and the young boys' faces, you can't put a price tag on that. And I, I don't think it's the right thing, unless there's a very deep explanation of an alternative in the area. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask you, as it is my role to preserve decorum in this room as we meet, I'm going to ask that you, please don't applause. I understand you're passionate about this and you're excited, but I don't want to turn into an episode of Jerry Springer. So, thank you. Does anybody else have questions or comments on the, this public hearing?
My name is Joe Gross, and I'm formerly also at David's location at 929 South 72nd. Now I live at 1606 South 65th Street. I'm affiliated with Liberty Heights Group that works there, and Dan knows that because he's come to some of our meetings and stuff, and he's done a wonderful job at promoting that park and bringing it back to life. And it's just wonderful what's going on there. Yeah, we've had a couple of problems there, but the majority of it has turned around, and we want to continue this. And again, it goes back to what David here said, it's for the children's sake. Now, I think we can work around this whole situation, and I do agree that we need to build up our neighborhoods, and you need to tax base for keeping taxes down and stuff, and I think that's great. At least we're looking at that for a perspective. Also, we've had some wonderful blessings from Epicos Church down there. And I know that once these people find out, which I just found out about this a few days ago, I'm going to try and get the church involved a little bit, get resources, try and work on that park possibly, if there's some of the church people living immediately in that area. We'll find out who they are, get us to help. Now, I have a question with the understanding here of what is the whole park? My understanding, there was some equipment originally placed up on a hill, which was exercise equipment. It was removed, and I don't know why that happened, if that had to do with the changing up the upper part of that park, which is the far-south park, being reevaluated and given a different title, or whatever you call it?
I think the school installed that, and then they moved it to another location that might get more usage.
So the, so the McKinley Playground, what was moved, that was a part of that situation?
That was exercise equipment that they, that the school put in.
Okay.
And they moved it to some other location they thought would get more use.
Okay. Now, the rest of the park, it goes down the hill and stuff, and then the kids have their little toys on one side. You got the basketball, it's busy. It's definitely busy. And especially, you get a lot of activity and a lot of exposure from around the town. Now, complementing what you're saying, this gentleman wants to bring some food entities maybe on the other side of the park. I don't think that'll be resisted, because I think after the game or something, somebody wants to go over there and get a hot dog, hamburger, or whatever is going to go in there that makes sense. But I, I don't know. I just don't believe that the park should be removed. I don't understand totally the situation with the field house. I'm formerly from the neighborhood, it was Jack Simon and Marie, and we went over there and had fun. Every day that field house was open and stuff, and that's been taken over by, I guess, a daycare, and I don't know if that still exists or not. And they've got the other daycare on the corner, right around on Walker Street, which is affiliated with MATC, the house, some of the children in there. I notice that that's usually not too many people there. You know, I don't know what that account is or anything, but that has affected the neighborhood. Also, a comment today from one of the gentlemen, I stopped on the street, he said, "Yeah, I was here 16 years. I bought my house because it was right across from the street, from the park." That's another, you know, people want to be close to the parks, especially if they're raising a family, and it works out better their environment. So I'm, I'm here primarily for the kids. The kids are losing things, and they don't need to lose any more grounds and stuff like that. And I don't see any alternatives, because I've heard stuff, "Oh, 76th Street, we can put in those little parks over there." Nobody uses those parks. Now, that would be more of a situation where you could use, put up some business or something like those parks, because they just aren't utilized. And to me, it's kind of scary over there for the kids to be crossing the main street, where here, they're kind of off the main 70th Street, so it's just thoughts. All right, I don't really have anything more to say, but I'm for the kids, and I think they need the green areas and the parks.
Thank you. Anybody else? You can come on up.
My name's Daniel Schaefer. I live at 1029 South 75th Street. Just a quick statement, some of the best friendships I ever had when I was a kid were at the baseball diamonds at the park. I'd like to see the kids in my neighborhood now have that same experience. But a question for you, sir. In your presentation, you talked about the sea of asphalt. Could you please explain to me the logic of destroying all the green space?
What we're trying to do is to, as I mentioned in my presentation, is to revitalize not only this area, but the whole city. And that's why we're trying to bring in more development to accomplish that. And the sea of asphalt, I refer to, obviously, the parking lots that were there.
So our neighborhood is being sacrificed for the redevelopment of the entire city?
I, everything, everything changes and everything evolves, and some of that park may change, and that's the purpose of this public hearing. And we're just trying to explain what might happen, what could happen, so that everybody has an opportunity to have, to have input on the whole process.
And I agree, things change and things evolve, but is it for the better?
Thank you.
My name is Steve Welly. I live at 937 South 72nd Street. I live directly across from the park. I've lived there 30 years. My kids have played there, the neighbors' kids have played there. I want, I want the park there for the future and for the other kids to play. I don't understand how, by taking away two-thirds of the park, you make things better. I was very upset. I got together with my neighbors and we started doing a petition drive. I knocked on doors from 71st Street, 72nd, 73rd, 74th. Everybody who I felt was affected by that. I got a letter from the city probably less than two weeks ago telling me about this meeting. I had no idea this was going on. I asked the people on 71st Street, on 73rd Street, 74th and 75th, "Did you get a letter from the city talking about this? They're talking about taking away the park?" Nobody got a letter that I'm aware of, except for the people that were exactly on that block. I don't know if that's the way things are done, but I think if it affects the entire community, more people should have known about it. And I'm wondering why it happened that way. I'm not sure what I can say to make you think about this. I know the city has good intentions, but I think they should think twice about whether taking this park away. It means a lot to the kids and people from outside of our area. There's little league games that are played there. There are basketball games, a little bit of tennis, not as much as it could be, and there's, there's a lot of park equipment that the kids use. I met my neighbors through going to that park. My kids play with other people's kids. That's how I met my neighbors. Otherwise, I probably wouldn't have. And I'm very disappointed that the city's even considering doing something like this. I don't mind about the revitalization of 70th Street, but it doesn't need to come two blocks in and take over the park directly in front of my house. I'm totally against this. If I would have had more time, I would have gone out and got more signatures. We got in the last five days almost 200 signatures of people that are disagree with this. You do not want this rezoned. I want you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have comments or questions?
Jay Fernandez, 1033 South 75th Street. Most of my comments are just that, comments, things for you to consider, and things that were made aware to me and to some of my neighbors. In discussions with our aldermen for our district, whom I call friends, Marty and Eric, it is my understanding that through the process, many of the plans that should have been in their hands when they were talking to constituents were not, and they were not updated, nor were they up to the minute as to what the plans were going to be. Last-minute emails, I understand, last-minute changes, or awarenesses that were made public to the individuals of the council. To me, in the way that that was being done, is what I consider poor business practice. It's something that eludes to shady or underhandedness when there's a lot of information that's not made available to people, especially to those that it affects. It is my understanding that from the rezoning, there are other options aside from going to a C3. C3, for some people who don't know, also includes the rezoning from C2. And as I was sort of almost joking with Marty, it allows for a lot of special conditions of use of that land that even though they would have to go to council to get approval, I joked to Marty, I said, "It's possible," and I read directly from the zone, "adult-oriented establishment" under the provision, section 928 of the city code. So even though I know that that's very likely not going to happen, the fact is, is that it can happen because we don't know what's going to happen there. So instead of doing that, it would be my proposal that you, if you are going to rezon, that you rezon based off of, one, having an understanding of what's expected to be there, and then ultimately to provide the rezon to only allow certain businesses that are approved by the constituents as well as the council as approved businesses for that section. So it would be a zone pertaining to the businesses that are allowed there rather than a very lenient rezon of classification C3. One of the things that many of us in West Alice understand is that our parcel of land is very small, especially when you have children. The children play in the backyard until they get old enough to ride a bike, to roller skate, to do anything, to play ball. And mostly, we send them to a park to enjoy those activities, because, one, we don't want our windows broken with baseballs, or kids can't ride a bike in the backyard. So if you don't have a park in general proximity, we're encouraging children to play in the streets. We're encouraging children to play in the alleys, which are also very dangerous. So instead of doing that, we need that green space, we need the park for children to play. And that is what attracts people, especially with families, to an area. So I would ask that you consider that when you're looking at, do we need a park? Do we need ball diamonds? Do we need a space that large? And lastly, again, just to reiterate, when things are done last minute, when discoveries are made, and, and sort of in response to outcry, it always lends itself to, why wasn't this made aware before? And what is it that we don't know yet? Because we're only getting answers when we ask the right questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Galuner, 11141 South 73rd Street. And I came here 30 years ago. I thought this was the tree, a city of trees, but now it's becoming a city of asphalt. And I think it's about time that this gentleman, we think, is, is a way of development. We have other things in the city that need more development than just this area. I think maybe we should go back and play with your Legos and figure something else out, because I like the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patty Contra. I reside on Twenty-eighth South Seventy-Fifth Street. As some of you may know, I currently lead the Beverly Park Neighborhood Association. I am here today because I would like to make a few statements in reference to the possible upcoming sale of our neighborhood park known as McKinley Park. This issue was recently presented to us at our neighborhood meeting on Thursday, March seventh, by both of our district aldermen, Marty and Eric. It was said to us on that night by Marty, and I will paraphrase, that the developer, all of a sudden, has decided that he wants this piece of property. He also said, and again, I will paraphrase, "This wasn't even in the plans a year ago. Now, he wants this property and the council doesn't want to lose an eighty-one million dollar investment." It's almost like he, I believe referring to the developer, is playing a game of chicken with us. Marty also stated that although he is pro-development and he is opposing the sale, it was then implied that we should contact each council member and the mayor to let them know of our opposition to the sale. There was also advice that we should attend tonight's meeting to voice this opposition. Of course, many of us thought, yes, let's do something to save our park. At one point, the resident even thought, hey, I will spend three to four hundred dollars out of my own pocket to make signs that will say something along the lines, "Let's save our park." That is how huge this loss is and how deeply we feel about this possible sale. I contacted the mayor, the council president, and a few aldermen stating my personal opposition. Would some of you have failed to realize that some of our own neighbors and friends are very inquisitive? Some work in real estate with commercial development? Some even with other municipalities? Through them, we have been able to gather information in relation to this issue. I am here not only to state how truly disappointed we are in the manner this issue was presented to us by Marty and Eric and the city itself, when instead your approach should have been an honest one. These actions appear to be disingenuous, only stated to appear to be for political cover. All of you sitting up there tonight, lady and gentlemen, we look up to you for answers, for honesty, and to be transparent. We expect nothing less than that. What we have found out through our research is that this, in fact, didn't just come up a year ago. The developer, all of a sudden, wanted to acquire this property. This has been the negotiations, and you have known about it since 2017. Regardless, we are now anxious to hear what Cobalt and the city, which has just presented, have in mind for the development in this rezoning area. I would also like to state to Council President Lysick that the ballpark is not, and I will repeat, it is not primarily used by adults. On any occasion or any evening, it is primarily used by children. You can go there on an evening to watch a T-ball game, a softball game being played by children. On the last note, know that we're not opposed to having a new park with new playgrounds or different amenities. We hope that from this point forward, all of you will have transparency, be truthful with your true intentions. This is, after all, where our children have played in the past, where our children continue to play today. McKinley Park is one of the few true neighborhood parks. It is within our neighborhood. It is our park. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that has comments on our public hearings?
Hi, my name is Meg Schusler. I'm at one-two-three-two South Seventy-Fourth Street. I just want to agree with the sentiments of Patty, who just came up here. I just found out about this last night from an amazing neighbor, Steve, who raised this concern to me and came to my door and was so saddened. I'm the mother of four kiddos who love McKinley Park and play there every day for the past probably twelve years. I think it does seem disingenuous. I think it does seem dishonest that the neighborhood did not have a discussion about this. I think it does seem dishonest through this presentation as you were talking about the park being put into two different areas and being sold off, but as one parcel until a park can be made. I just thought, first of all, it's not good enough. I want the whole park. And second of all, who knows? Who knows what this developer's going to do? He's not the mom with four kids. He's not the man who lives across the street who's going to see buildings put up. So, he does not have buy-in to this community yet. And so, that would be unfortunate to make that kind of deal, I think, and to do it in such a rapid way. Not only do kids play at this park, but parents who are watching these games, this is how community is made. Because parents are watching games and they are sharing their lives with one another. And so, giving this part of the park away would be giving so much of this community away. So, I really hope that these words are heard. I decided to go out and just talk to neighbors on one block and every single household had the same sentiment. So, I'm not just speaking from my perspective, but I'm speaking for our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anybody else have comments or questions on our public hearings, three or four?
Hi, Heidi Klug. I live at eleven-twelve South Seventy-Second Street. I'm very upset about all of this coming to light the way that it did. Again, just within the last couple of days, Steve came around to my, our house. My husband and I both found out about this on, I think, Sunday night. We live just across Washington Street. The park is right there. My kids are two and four. And they love going down there. My daughter loves, my oldest, she's four. She loves going down there because she knows when she asks me if we can go to the park, we can go to that park because it's right up the street. It doesn't take a car to get there. It doesn't take a half-mile walk to get there. She likes to ride her bike up there. And against my husband's better judgment, he told her where I was going tonight. And she had a little bit of a breakdown when she found out that the park might be disappearing. Because, of course, in her four-year-old mind, she's thinking this is happening tomorrow, which hopefully, it's not. But, like you said, it's so rushed. All of a sudden, everything's thrown at you. And I mean, at least you guys have had some warning to this. Us neighborhood people, like, we just found out about this in some cases two, three nights ago or last night. And so, and I don't want to see it go. And unfortunately, if you rezone it, it just seems like rezoning, it's going to let that slope just go right down. You don't know what's going to happen because now, now it is rezoned. They don't have to go through one more step. It's gone. They can just kind of keep plowing through. Just seems like a very slippery slope for all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the audience have comments or questions? Okay. Sorry? You can. The only thing is that we won't hear you on our TV broadcast.
I moved here back in nineteen sixty.
Can we, I'm sorry, can we have your name and your address, please?
Elizabeth Cole, eleven thirty-two South Seventy-Fourth Street.
Thank you.
And my kids went down to McKinley with Jack and Marie were there. Jack and Marie kept these kids busy. They kept them out of jail and different wrong ways of life that they could go. And it's interesting that you're going to take this away from the kids that are in this community now? Why? For some guy who wants, he's got a lot of money? He could go anyplace in the city or other cities. What about down there on Sixty-Second Street and Sixty-Fourth Street? They got all kinds of apartments. Who's living in them? I want you to think about that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has questions or comments this evening on these items? Okay. Now, we will close our public hearings, three and four. Thank you all. And we will move on to item E, which is citizen participation. This is the opportunity for residents to address the council on matters of interest to them. We ask that you keep your comments to the five-minute window. And we have this set up to be a thirty-minute portion of our agenda this evening. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation? And again, we ask for your name and address, please.
My name is Mara LeBlanc and my address is eleven-ten South Seventy-Fifth Street. Thank you for this time to share with you some concerns that has arisen in my family. I've served this community of West Dallas for over twenty years as the West Dallas School District Nurse. So, I am invested in this community and I've seen great progress because as a community goes, so goes the school district. My family prepared to sell our home on South Seventy-Fifth Street. We put it on the market in the worst time of the year, right a week before Christmas. The market is strong here in West Dallas. Received two full-price offers for our home and we proceeded. We proceeded through the building inspection or a building inspector came in as provided for by our buyer. And everything was good. A few little items to repair, which we did. And, for example, changing on our water heater. When the plumbing inspector came in to review and sign off on the permit, he found and reported that our basement area and our, was considered attic area is considered to be unpermitted. Of course, this brought great concern to our buyer. And we are now in our third extension. We said to our buyer, this was news to us. We had no idea, but we will make it right. Going through this process, it was an assumption on our part that because the assessor deemed our property to have four bedrooms and one and a half baths, it was our inference that the city now knew about this. It's on the tax rules as being a home possessing four bedrooms. This was not the case, according to the building department. So, we are now going back through this long and frustrating process to see what we can do to make things right. This is a home in the Fairview area, which has shown great improvement over the twelve years that we've owned the home. It was a little sketchy when we first moved in there and some concerns with crime. Greatly improved. The homes around our home had, around our homes had been foreclosed upon. We have new families living there now that they are homeowners. And it has greatly improved. But through this process, the concern that I have is that we have two departments of the city that are not speaking to each other. The assessor has been, when we looked through the records back in nineteen seventy-five, indicated that there were four bedrooms in this home, two bedrooms in the upper level. With the building department, there was no permit for this, even though the building inspector, when I invited him to come look in, said, "It appears that one of these bedrooms had been original to the home when it was built." I have no proof. The city has no plans, no original permit for the home. So, we are left with the assumption that these are not part of the original process and therefore, unpermitted. When you look to see what is the process to making them being permitted, it includes things like deconstruction, which basically means tearing apart the house to say what has been there for at least over almost fifty years may or may not be acceptable or permitted by the city. Now, in the day of technology, it seems a burden to the residents that these two entities are not speaking to one another. And they shared with me that this is not, the first time this has happened, this is not unique to our situation. But it is a frustration and a burden to the residents when this comes up out of nowhere unless one goes looking for it. And the reason I went looking for it is because I allowed a building inspector into my basement to look at this. So, how do we go about trying to make this a better process for the citizens, the residents of West Dallas, for the homeowners? And how do we get past this? Right now, unless my house is deconstructed or, in other words, destroyed, it will not be permitted. Holes are not dug in my basement to approve the footings. It will not be permitted. And I will once again lose my sale of my home to a young family, the type of family that West Dallas is seeking out to become residents and active members of your community. Thank you.
I think you're, I'm sorry, I think your five minutes were up. I apologize for that. I don't know where that came from or who set that up or... Did you want to finish? I'm sorry if you had to. Okay. Wow. Okay. I hope we didn't scare anybody else away from citizen participation with that. Our IT guy's blushing, but... Does anybody else have, does anybody else wish to participate under citizen participation this evening?
Joe Gross again, and I'm at sixteen oh-six South Sixty-Fifth. I'm a little concerned about what's going on over at the farmer's market. They got the plastic all over. But I don't think they're retaining all that waste inside, encapsulating inside the plastic. I think it's getting all over. If you take a ride on Sixty-Seeth, Sixty-Sixth Street, it's all over the snow out there. And I'm concerned about that because it's going into the air and we're possibly breathing it in the neighborhood. And I don't know why we capsulated and we're taking this all down instead of just encapsulating by covering the problem.
I'd have to talk to the city engineer because we have a contractor hired to repaint that.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just saying, you know? Because I've had to deal with encapsulation because I had to do house windows. And every time, I had to get a special vacuum to do this stuff. And so, the waste product from the lead paint would not go onto the soil and stuff. And I had a little experience with that. And it just seems something's not right over there or somebody needs from the city to monitor.
And I see our city engineer in the back of the room there. He could probably answer your questions directly. Thanks. Thank you. Yep. Does anybody else have comments or questions under citizen participation this evening? Okay, we will close citizen participation. And we will move on to item G. I don't have anything for the mayor's report this evening other than to just congratulate the West Dallas Central Boys Basketball Team on their run to Madison, to State. They were essentially in the state's final four. Unfortunately, they came up short against Sun Prairie in that quarter, or that semifinal game. But they put on some very exciting wins in the Milwaukee area sectionals. And they knocked out Franklin. They knocked out Waukesha West. And it's always fun when West Dallas can defeat their neighbors in sports. So, I just want to congratulate them. Does anybody have? No, did I forget part? I'm sorry, the bullhorn blew me, threw me off a little. So, that does conclude the mayor's report. And I'm going to now back up to item F just to announce that our... to announce that our standing committees will be meeting during recess, and those room numbers are listed on your agendas on page number two. So yeah, that concludes the mayor's report. Do we have any reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigl.
I just wanted to mention, a lot of people might have heard the story about the contractor that does the crossing guards for our community and a couple of other ones. And I spoke to the mayor about it yesterday, and I know that the mayor's been volunteering out. And I actually spent a couple shifts today, and I would encourage everybody who considers themselves qualified, I guess maybe want to limit it to city employees, whatever, but acting as a crossing guard really makes you think about how people drive. And I would encourage everybody to think when they drive and put down their phone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other alderpersons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of the common council regular meeting of March 5th, 2019. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any adjustments or amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. On item J, on your agendas, we have three items. I'll ask for a motion to place item six on file and refer item seven and eight to the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion with a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Standing committee reports on, under a K, we have none. Item L is a reconsideration of a motion.
Mayor Devine, resolution number 2019-0186. It's a reconsideration of resolution approving the city of West Dallas requisition rights for three parcels. They're comprised of McKinley Park, tax keys 440-0213-002, 440-0213-003, 440-0004-001. That'll be referred to the Safety Development Committee.
And I'll second that.
Here's a motion and a second by Alderman Weigl. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We are in recess.